I missed my calling this stage.
Okay.
Can't say that every time.
Oh, it's maybe the whole meeting took orders and local government is yours.
Thank you. Well, thanks for having me back. Glad that it wasn't so mind numbing last time that you wanted to do it again. This one, I think, should be a little bit more engaging and interesting and hopefully we can have some thoughtful discussion. I sent back some follow-ups to your questions that you asked through Diane's. Hopefully you got those all. And again, if you have any tonight that I can't answer, please, I will definitely document them and will be more than happy to pass them on.
Actually, before we go on, did you guys get those? Because I sent them from my phone and I, okay, I gotta resend them because I had a message. I tried it a couple of times and I was not ever clear if they went through. So I'll have to resend that.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So tonight, we're gonna talk about ethics and just sort of what the statute recommends, as well as what we would call the smell test, or really making good decisions that reflect all on you and your reputation as elected official. So I just started right with the smell test. The statute in the state of Wisconsin is very specific, which is good in that it's crystal clear, but it's bad in that it doesn't cover a lot. So there is what we would call the smell test in how elected officials examine ethics and look at situations and make their own determinations about what ethical behavior would be. And it's hard to really put your finger on what the smell test is, what would pass it. It really relies on having a good role compass and having public servants who have a strong role compass that can make good decisions. But sometimes it can be tricky. So we're gonna go into that today and talk about specific scenarios and talk about definitions within the statute and how you might apply that outside the statute while applying the smell test. But like I said, it is kind of this ambiguous area and it's okay if it's confusing. I think it is for a lot of people and even with years of experience, it can sometimes be challenging to determine, okay, what is the right course of action in a situation like this? So smell test would really be kind of just what it sounds like. If it smells fishy, or it looks like it might be something that could come back to haunt you if you were involved and you would have to really defend your involvement, pause and give additional thought to your involvement. And oftentimes, this is when you have a personal stake, more so than just your stake in it being, well, I live in Hortonville, this is important to me because I'm a resident or because I'm a property taxpayer. If it's something a little closer in nature than that, like if it's family, if it's your personal business, if you have a financial investment above and beyond that that everyone else in the community has, that's when you really wanna take pause and identify, is this a matter that I should really be discussing, that I should be voting on, or would my personal conflict actually invalidate my opinions and my vote here? So when you do have gray areas, that's where, you know, myself, as representing local government center, I would just recommend, take additional pause, use your expertise that you obviously have that got you elected and your expertise knowing the circumstances and situations that you're discussing and voting on to exercise good judgment when you do have personal ties to saying it. And sometimes in smaller municipalities, there's a lot fewer degrees of separation and it sometimes can be easier to find yourself in situations where you're wearing multiple hats or you represent a personal interest in something. So when it's not clear by law or the law, always take what we'd call personal smell tests. Jumping into the statute, the statute's where it's nice and clear, which is really useful and helpful and something that I think the state of Wisconsin has really made great strides in making accessible and understandable. And I brought some examples, which we'll go over in a little bit, from the website that I think really make it cut and dry about making decisions and I think that's a vast improvement from the way things have been in the past. So the statute was created in 1991 and adopted in 1992, which seems like fairly recent for local government. Because of that, there are some set circumstances where court decisions decided before 1992 actually take precedent above the statute because it was, it occurred beforehand, but they're limited. And I would mostly just recommend that we focus on the statutes tonight. So the Government Accountability Board used to exist until the end of the 2016 fiscal year. Starting in the 2017 fiscal year, the Wisconsin Ethics Commission replaced that. So that is a relatively recent change. I've got a link here to the Ethics Commission website and one of the handouts that I've included includes some printouts from the Ethics Commission website. I think they do a really nice, clear-cut job of explaining roles or conflicts that you might encounter. And I tried to print off some of the ones that you are most likely to encounter at the village board level. At the local level within Algeini County, if something were to happen that would be an ethics concern, you know, which we're hoping that doesn't happen, but if it were to happen, it would be prosecuted at the district attorney level. So where the state sort of puts the outward messaging, has sort of the final say on things, at the local level, it would be enforced by the county DIA. All local public officials who hold local public office, in quotes, is who is covered by the state code of ethics. And this makes it a little bit gray for municipal level employees because technically speaking, elected officials, village managers, appointed municipal officers, employees who serve for specified terms, anybody who serves at the pleasure of the administration, they would count. Independent contractors and those who conduct non-discretionary tasks do not count. And this is where local government center actually encourages the section of the statute that allows local governments to enact their own code of ethics, encourage them to do so. That can be a really confusing gray area about, okay, well, are you appointed? Do you serve at the pleasure? Are you non-discretionary? It can be confusing about whether or not those individuals fall under the state ethics code. In that case, some municipalities have opted to create their own code of ethics, which cover all employees, totally eliminating that gray area. And honestly, it's, I think, and local government center thinks that's a good practice because it encourages ethical behavior above and beyond what the law requires, which you really can't be too ethical. Like, you're never gonna get in trouble for being too ethical. Like I said, there are exemptions. Some other folks who would be exempt would be those who are appointed for indefinite terms and out and then removable for cause. So what can't you do under the statute? It really comes down to three things. You cannot use your elected position for private gain, which would be either financial or anything of value, or to benefit people you're related to, like families or business contacts, or businesses that you have an ownership stake in. You can't offer or receive anything of value. That could be something like a position, it could be something like guaranteeing a contract, or it could be something as straightforward as money. And you can't take action in matters where you personally have a financial interest and that includes your immediate family and organizations you're involved in. And the organization one, I think, is a little bit gray, so we will dive into that a little bit further. That's, I mean, it's pretty clear, like, okay, are they your mother? Are they your husband? Because it's a little dicey when it comes to organizational relationships. Now, you can make decisions on things such as employee salaries, benefits, expense reimbursements. Now, for salaries and determining like what village trustees make, obviously, that's a decision that you have to vote on because you are a voted body politic and you have a personal stake in it, but that would be one of the very few changes. You can also modify ordinances, which would impact you as residents. So there are some exceptions, but the state does a pretty good job about enumerating the exceptions. So, and I think I've hinted at this before, the statute specifically speaks to things where you are among the class of your peers. That would mean you can vote on things which you have an interest in that everybody else has an interest in. So if it's an issue like that affects every property tax owner, everybody in the school district, you can still vote on that. You don't have any more or less interest than other residents. It's when you have a much closer and more distinct interest where you really need to kind of execute that smell test and make sure that it's not something questionable.
Alison?
Yes?
One time, at one of the classes, we were told that if you remember the subdivision that's getting special assessed for project, that you're of equal status with all the other members of the subdivision and that then you also don't have a problem.
And I would, that sounds correct, from what I've been told. I walked through some scenarios with local government center. It's, it really comes down to more specific scenarios, like you own the business that may be assigned a contract. And it actually even gets into specifics of monetary values, like the volume and size of those contracts. But I don't think the subdivision thing would be an issue based on what I've been told. I'd be happy to double check it though.
Yeah, I know that we had some of the ethics courses and they said that because you are a member of the larger class and being treated the same as all the rest of the class members, that then it was okay.
I heard that, that same thing. And just like a large-scale zoning change, if it's on an individual property that you have interest in, but if it's, you know, like our downtown zoning, for example, that you, if you're a part of that larger group, then it's not a conflict. So that's what I've learned in my circle, I guess you could say, as well.
Well, and you have to look at two, like, could somebody skew that later and say, oh, you voted this way because of your interest? So if it was like one parcel being rezoned and you own that parcel, that looks pretty bad. If it's a whole, you know, segment of the municipality that's being rezoned, I think it's a little bit harder to pin unethical behavior on that person. So in terms of, and I have to laugh that this has to be explained so explicitly, but I guess it's a good thing. So they actually go so far as to define exactly what familiar relationships count towards ethical or unethical decision-making. So immediate family in terms of the statute, meaning, you know, family members that if they're involved, you should not vote or be a part of the discussion or decision-making process, includes spouses, as well as by marriage, descent, adoption, who receive more than 50% of their support from the official, or who contribute to 50% or more of your support. So dating does not count. I did check on that.
Contribute to more than 50% of my support? I want that.
Right.
So if your kids are on your own, on their own, it doesn't count?
That's what it says.
That's, that's just, I think, I'm very surprised.
Right. I was surprised as well, but it's, when it's not, the spouse always counts, but for parents, adopted, adopted children, descendants, et cetera, it kind of falls under that 50% category where they are truly a financial dependent. When it comes to organizations, it really relies on ownership stake. So if it's a corporation, partnership, any of the other various legal formations you could have for a corporation, that would be something where obviously if you have a, an ownership stake, you should not be involved in. They even dictate the percentage of work ownership. It's if you own at least 10%, it's not just being an employee or a member of that organization. You have to have some ability to persuade the way that organization functions and make decisions.
So if somebody is a member of a club here, like the commercial club?
I was gonna say the same thing. Nonprofit, that's a great area for us.
Nonprofit club association or just a member that doesn't have owners, then they could go ahead and vote on things if they chose to?
Hmm. I wonder if in that case, it might not come down to like board director roles if you really have a decision-making capacity within that organization? That's another good one to check on because they only specifically adopt, mention, I mean, technically nonprofits are non-stud corporations, but it dictates that there must be ownership. So.
And with these groups, there aren't ownerships.
Right.
Directors, but they can own.
But there are decisions at the local level that directors impact the organization.
And we, our group has been abstaining from decisions like that.
Okay. Body politics, local government, that one, they really speak specifically in the statute to county board representations. Is anybody who's on the village board in Hortonville also the county board? Okay, so not really a conjunction for you guys. But this would mean that if you were also sitting on the county board, it would not be a conflict of interest for you to consider items that interface with the county. It also means that you being village trustees interacting with the county government is not a conflict of interest. Then one of the examples they often give is if there is, let's say, like a highway project that's county-funded and is coming through your municipality and you have some exercise over decisions as a village trustee, you are still allowed to vote on it whether you're on the county board or not because it's considered another governmental entity that you're allowed to, it's not an ethical conflict to interact and make decisions based upon. And that applies across all local governments. So that same would be similar if you were dealing with a neighboring municipality. So associations, you know, the state specifically says you cannot make decisions if you have an association with an organization. That could mean that yourself has an ownership or leadership stake, or your immediate or individual family member has that ownership or leadership stake. It's not as simple as being an employee, like I specified before. So if it, you know, an issue comes forward and it's a company that's, let's say, a major employer and you happen to work there, that in and of itself is not enough of a conflict to say, oh, I have to remove myself from this. It's really when you have that leadership power. Now, they even go so far as to define value. As I mentioned before, promising something of value to someone does not, is not limited just to money. It could be something like a promise of money, it could be a loan, it could be promise of a job. It does not include compensation and expenses paid by the state. So if it was an actual state contract, that's not a conflict. It's when, you know, you're kind of doing these obviously questionable, under-the-table promising of things. That's where the state says, don't do it. Now, how do you remove yourself? This is kind of a tricky question sometimes because sometimes it isn't clear until you actually get to the meeting and get into the discussion where you realize, ooh, I may have waited in a little further than I should have. And obviously, we want to as much as possible exercise good judgment so that you're not put in a situation where you're waiting in to an area where there is a conflict. But if a matter comes forward that you recognize at that time you should not participate in, you, it's not legally required, but local government center recommends at that point you state and have on the record, you know, I'm gonna remove myself from the discussion, I have a conflict. You don't have to share what it is. You don't have to say, well, I have a conflict because X, Y, Z. You can just say, I have a conflict and I'm gonna remove myself from the discussion. It's really important that it's not just removing yourself from the voting. Technically speaking, voting isn't the only way you could influence a decision. You can influence a decision with things that you shared during the discussion. You can influence the decision with your body language. One of the examples that local government center likes to use was, I believe, somebody's daughter or daughter-in-law was up for a job and the person launched into this explanation saying, despite all the amazing qualifications and her years of experience and, you know, just basically like list off this huge resume of why this person was qualified, they said, I have to remove myself from the discussion because I have a conflict. So obviously, that was removing themselves in name only. They still managed to, you know, get in their commentary and really offer advice and contribute to the discussion and decision-making process even though they didn't vote. So the best practice would be to actually physically remove yourself. The state doesn't say you have to, but it would be good practice because we, subconsciously, whether we know it or not, can often express our feelings and opinions through our body language. And if it can come back to haunt you later, maybe there's somebody, you know, there watching and commenting, maybe there's someone taking photos, don't move yourself in a position. If you honestly don't think you can sit in a room with a straight face and not influence the discussion, it's probably in your best interest to leave the room.
I was at a meeting once, just to give an example where it did, it happened and then the vote was challenged, this is when I worked at Marathon County and it was a zoning meeting and one of the members argued adamantly, I can't remember if it was for, it was against the rezon of his neighbor's property. And then when it came to the vote, and I mean adamantly, he said, I hope, you know, you guys will all vote the right way. And then when it came to the vote, he said, well, I recuse myself because I'm going to abstain because I have a conflict. And it was after he did the whole argument. And then the property owner was in the audience, actually sitting next to me, and he ended up challenging that vote and it was turned over because that person spent a considerable amount of effort to sway the vote, but then said, I'm not voting.
Right, right. And that's.
And it was overturned.
That's where it can be challenging too, because, and it's, I really wanna stress that the state does not say you must leave the room. Because you do technically have rights to free speech still and the state cannot curtail that. It's not as though because you're an elected official, you forego your first amendment when it just happens to not look good. You do still have the right to express yourself, but it can have consequences. And as long as the issue has a public discussion period, you technically could have removed yourself from the discussion, going sat in the audience and then contributed as a member of the public. Does that look bad? Yes. Should you do it? Probably not. If you can't have the discussion up here as an elected official because you have a conflict, it really doesn't look good on you as an elected official to go sit in the audience and comment as a member of the public. It's just, it's not good practice. Legal, yes. Good practice, no. And that's sort of where we enter that smell test realm, where the statute says that you can do that and you are guaranteed for your own speech, but probably definitely wouldn't recommend it because you could end up in a situation like that where your votes are invalidated. The meeting minutes should reflect if you do make yourself absent from a discussion. It should, like I said, it does not have to state what your conflict is, but it should state that you were not a part of the discussion. And I just kind of reiterated that on the next slide, saying that if you realize you made a discussion, make sure that the minutes reflect that you left. Now, abstention. So this kind of ties right into conflict of interest. As we talked about last time a little bit with open meetings law, you should not be using abstention or closed sessions to get out of having discussions about uncomfortable topics in the public. This kind of comes with the territory of being an elected official. It's not always great. Sometimes you have to discuss things that are uncomfortable or you feel like you don't have expertise, but you should not be using abstentions to avoid discussions nor should you be using closed sessions to have discussions that should be open and private. Abstention is not just about voting, like, that's a great example that you just shared, so thank you for that. If you are not in a position to vote on something because of conflict, you should not be discussing it either. And your absence from a discussion and from the vote should be noted in the record. That way, it doesn't get pulled up later, someone saying, oh, well, were they there because we researched this and we polled that they had this connection to so-and-so? It's just way easier to just be able to point to it and say, look, my record's clean. I did what I was supposed to as an elected official, the record shows this, your argument holds no water. Now, as I mentioned earlier, municipalities can adopt their own ethics ordinances that can clarify ethics rules. They can require things such as disclosing economic interests when you join the board or when you join the organization. I work for the University of Wisconsin system, we have to disclose our economic interests when we start being employed there. That's just an expectation of the institution. You can establish ethics boards ad hoc, if you'd like, that can review things, should they come up or answer questions, as well as prescribe standards of conduct above and beyond what the state statute requires. Some communities even have forfeitures established where there are actual fines to discourage unethical behavior. So I included for you guys five copies today, right from the ethics website. I really like the way things are laid out now on the new ethics website and I included some examples of things that I thought there was a chance of you running into. That's a packet that's structured with black, white, and gray, headlined in a box. Feel free to review that on your own time and then the ethics website, I think, is a great resource if we ever have a question. Or you can also have me to contact me and I will pass on those questions to the local government center, which is another great resource. Self-dealing is gonna be our next topic within ethics. This is where we really get into the monetary interests and why it's important if you do have, you know, a unique role, that sometimes you have where your business interest or your professional career might have a conflict, that you don't have to handle it. Now, Hortonville and most municipalities in Wisconsin are not like, let's say, the city of Milwaukee, where being an elected official is actually a full-time salary position. For many people, it is something that they do in addition to their part-time job, which I, or sorry, full-time job, which I think should really be respected and revered, that people have, are willing to make the time for public service in their life when we all know that there's not enough hours in the day. So because of that, you may end up in situations where there is a question about, oh, shoot, like, you know, my wife is part of this organization or my husband is a part of this organization or my business has ties to this decision the village is making. What do I do in those situations? The state has tried to make it easier by putting numbers on it. Because the law prohibits elected officials and municipal officials from having private financial interests in governmental decisions, they have set monetary limits on things. So if you have a contract through your business that totals less than $15,000 with the village, as long as it's disclosed, that is acceptable. If you're a banker that represents, let's say, a financial institution that the village has a relationship with, if you, and it gets a little dicey about your role at the bank, if you have a direct role, let's say you're in like sales of some nature at the bank and your pay is based on the volume of accounts, that's where it starts to look a little bad and you might wanna step away from it. But if you have just a general role at the bank or you're in a leadership capacity, but it's not directly related to the loan, then it would come down to dollar amounts. And the state stipulates $10,000. If you receive less than $10,000 a year in your village trustee role, then you can move ahead of the relationship. If you receive more than that as a trustee, then you need sort of more closely look at it. Same thing goes for attorneys. If you provide counsel to a municipality, if you're a non-municipality that has a full-time attorney, which you guys do have full-time counsel, correct? For the village?
We have him by contract.
Okay.
He's not really, he's a limited number of hours, so don't consider full-time.
Okay. So if you have someone, let's say that that person, that they live in Hortonville?
Yes.
Okay. Let's say they decided to run for village trustee. If they were making less than $10,000 a year, then they could, I would imagine they'd want to, because that's just opening yourself up to a lot of.
Because more than that, so you can't.
Right. But if they were lesser than that, which can sometimes be the case, a lot of these things, I see these numbers, I think this is more a town issue, where you're looking at lower budgets, you're looking at lower staff levels, a lot of contract services. It's a lot of a hierarchy for municipalities like villages and cities because oftentimes they pay more than that or they have more staff, so it's these less gray areas. Owning stock in a corporation is also, they put a percentage on it, so we talked before about how if you owned 10% or more of a company, and that would be a company that's not publicly held, if it is publicly held, then it drops down to 2%. I don't know what the logic behind that is, but publicly held companies, if you hold 2% or more of the stock, then you have to make sure that you're not putting yourself in a self-dealing situation. If it's a privately held company, it's a 10% ownership stake or a leadership role. Self-dealing is a felony. I don't know what the going, like, starting punishment rate is for it, but felonies are not easy to get off your record and it definitely doesn't look good when elected officials get them. So there is a question about incompatibility between offices. And the state specifically says in the ethics statute that you cannot hold two offices or an office in a position where one is superior to the other. So you couldn't, you know, freelance as an appraiser for the village and also be a trustee because you and your trustee role make decisions that affect that level of an employee. So it is a conflict that you're basically making decisions about your own job. It also gives you the ability to put yourself in situations where you might be making disciplinary decisions, for example, about your supervisor or about a colleague, and it puts you in a situation where you're just a little too close to a circumstance where the state would say, no, you can't have two offices in that capacity. It's a little bit different for volunteer first responders and I think that the state is just cognizant of the fact that particularly if you're in some rural areas, you oftentimes have people wearing multiple hats and people may very well be a town elected official, they may be a volunteer individual, first responders. So then it comes down to salaries. If you're a municipality of 5,000 people or less, the, if your compensation in that volunteer capacity does not exceed $25,000, then you can also serve as an elected official. Otherwise, if it's 5,000 or more, then the compensation drops down to $15,000. So it would be sort of the, the level where you're gonna have to make a decision. Do you wanna be an elected official or do you wanna be a first responder?
More than 25?
I was just gonna ask that. Come on. Now, let's say that you're obviously all elected officials and you're part of creating a new position within the municipality. Even if you resign, you should not be taking that newly created job. It can easily come back to haunt you to say, oh, well, you know, did you design that job in a way that you knew you'd be an ideal candidate? Did you put certain qualifications on it that would make your own candidacy rise to the top? If it's an existing position that you're applying for rather than a new one, you can apply for, but you have to completely resign first. It's not like you could be in the application process and accept the job and then resign. It just, it never looks good. That's a circumstance where, again, you know, you really wanna exercise your best judgment. You certainly can run for office while you're sitting in an elected role, but, and that would be like sort of another office, not running for the same office again, but you must take the new role and resign from the first. And the state actually stipulates that. So, and I don't know a good Algeini County example, but if you were running for, county board doesn't count, but let's say, I believe they just changed the law recently where, yeah, you can't run for state assembly and be a county executive. So if you were to get the state assembly seat and you were county executive, you would have to resign the county executive position, if that makes sense. Even if you decided after you won and you were like, oh, I'll sway my options then, you can't. You have to resign the first position you held and take on the second one that you just ran for. So, I mean, I guess the lesson there would be really short if you want the position you're running for. Local government officials can absolutely serve as county board supervisors, though. You can serve on local boards and commissions. Oftentimes, boards and commissions appreciate and desire to have elected official representation as, you know, it can obviously seem like these are people who have the best interests of the communities in mind. They're public servants who are called to serve their larger community. They're public servants who are called, so they're a larger community. However, you cannot get additional renumeration for that role. If there is a per diem paid to everyone, you are able to accept a per diem, but it can't be a special per diem just for you as the elected official. This one doesn't, the last one I mentioned doesn't apply in this county, but we also have shares that county board supervisors cannot take on the role of county administration coordinator. We don't have that position in Algeany County, so it's not really an issue here. So the other basic notos that we'll just cover quickly would be intentionally failing or refusing to perform a known mandatory non-discretionary ministerial duty of your office or employment. So it's a really giant, huge word way of saying intentionally not doing things that you know are part of your role. You can't knowingly break the law while in an official capacity. You can't exercise discretionary power in a manner inconsistent with the duties of your office in order to gain yourself a personal and dishonest advantage. You should never take bribes. You should never promise official appointment or anything of value to secure votes. And you cannot sell or procure for sale any municipal article to city or village employees. And I wasn't really clear on what that last one even meant, so I asked for an example. An example would be if you own, let's say, a uniform embroidery or, you know, garment graphics company. You cannot, let's say like you have the contract for the village employees. You cannot sell directly to those employees and say, you have to buy this uniform. It's a condition of your employment. Oh, and you have to buy it through me. You can't do that. If you're going to be a major vendor to the village, you should not be also sitting in an elected role. It's a little bit different if it's not a requirement of employment. But I know, like for example, we use Landen for all of our embroidery garments. So if we were actually in Dodgeville and not in Hortonville right now and you had a huge percentage ownership stake in Landen, you should probably not be on the Dodgeville village board if you're requiring individuals to buy embroidered garments from your company. So I have an out there example, but nothing other than meals, public services, and special equipment that serve the employees' health and safety should be things that you are directly selling to employees because that would be a financial advantage.
So the trustees can buy us lunch?
That's what it says, yeah. Let's try. They can tap into the plus salaries from the first responders. So these ones all cover the minimum standard of what is expected under the ethics statute for the state. That's not to say that if it's not written in stone, that you shouldn't exercise good judgment. These ethical standards are a good starting point, but conducting the smell test regularly and really being sure and trying to look independently at circumstances and say, how would this look to the public? How would this look if this relationship was disclosed, you know, on the front page of the newspaper? Put yourself in the situation of examining your reputation from the outside in. There's a lot of respect and clout that comes with being elected official and I think I've expressed how much I respect people who are called a public service. Don't jeopardize that by voting on something that's a little bit too close to your personal life or your personal finances. It doesn't look good and it can really wreak havoc on your reputation should it come into the limelight. I did include one example of when ethics can kind of catch up with you. I printed out this article that was in WPR last year where a board member was actually accused at the town level of profiting from the approval of a sand trap mine permit. And what ended up happening in that case was the individual had said that they did not have an ownership stake in this decision. They voted, you know, small town board, that one person was able to swing the vote in this vote. They voted to approve the permit and then they had a financial stake in that happening. And in some cases, what can happen later is the vote can actually be overturned later because they realized there was a conflict. I believe in this case, it actually was thrown out for a technicality. So this person kind of lucked out, but I mean, this was all over and this was, this hit more the western side of the state, the Minnesota news market. But it really had egg on the face of this person who's elected official. I mean, if you look at that as, trying to look at it as a voter and a resident perspective, I mean, would you really feel confident voting in someone that you knew had openly lied, not disclosed a financial interest and then taken a vote on something that they were going to gain from?
I know, I wouldn't. He faced three years in prison and $10,000 in gains.
Right, right. And who knows, maybe he made more than $10,000 in his financial gains, but I don't know how many dollars we can.
Trains and three years in prison, exactly.
So it's, it is something that can be hard to see until you're in the middle of the situation and then it can be a little bit stressful and overwhelming trying to say, oh my gosh, should I separate myself from this? But as much as you can, the statute and ethics commission really rely on good judgment at the local level. Anybody have any ethics questions?
It's actually the class I'm taking right now for my masters is Leadership and Ethics in Public Administration.
Yeah, I bet you're reading about all kinds of formal examples. Okay, well, again, please feel free to send me a message if you think of something afterwards. I'm more than happy to follow up on it. I will follow up on the two questions you guys had, which were if being on a nonprofit board counts as a conflict and about living in a subdivision. I'm pretty confident on the subdivision one that living in a subdivision that has an assessment coming or has a change coming, you would count as a class of peers?
What about school board and village board?
That one I will also follow up on now.
Because the only time we really deal with school board is with the SRO contract.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you could find that out.
I will, absolutely will.
Thank you.
And then I'll, I'll resend that email that apparently didn't go through to all of you guys. That was, Allison had followed up with me on the questions from the last session.
And really what they reiterated loud and clear was most of those circumstances, you guys provided like the Lakes Association, that it was not so much about how many people were in attendance or whether quorum was there. It was more about who formed that commission the first time around. So if that commission was actually formed at one point by the government, then it falls as a subunit of government and is subject to open meetings law. So sometimes it goes back to questions of formation that precede your involvement. But if when that association or organization was formed, if it was formed by mandate of local government, then it's forever subject to.
It wasn't formed by mandate of the local government, but it was formed underneath the state rules. So the state rules govern this.
Yeah, and I think, I think the county board actually had to do resolutions.
But on the Lakes Association one specifically, they did recommend noticing. And it said, even if no one shows up, your interests are protected as a member. That is saying, hey, we noticed that. We did what we were supposed to do.
Thank you very much for this again. We very much appreciate you taking your time to.
Not a problem.